Okay, good afternoon, parents. Thank you for picking time off to join me this afternoon for cyber wellness. Okay, today our topic is actually on managing excessive gaming. I hope the one hour session will be meaningful to all of you. Just some housekeeping matters. Please take note that this session will be recorded. So this session will be recorded and the recording will be popped in our school YouTube channel by the end of next week. So if you missed any of the session or would like to, you know, re-look at some of the things that we highlight during the discussion. You can always look at the recording, the YouTube channel, right? We have actually disabled the function for chat. So if there's any question, please kindly tap in under the Q and A. Right? Thank you so much. So I will proceed with today's. Session just. Okay, it's not moving. Let me see. Oh, it's not going to the next slide. Sorry, it got hung here. Okay, there goes. So first, let me just start by sharing with you. Because my screen, obviously, okay. I'm so sorry, yeah, we just be. You wanted to be on top. Okay, sure. So, um, so let me just start sharing by highlighting our school stand. So Admiralty Primary School, right, our stand when it comes to gaming. We have spoken this and we have actually highlighted it with our children that if the student are already gaming, please stop. Alright, please stop gaming. But of course, we all understand that it's pretty impossible for all our children to stop gaming, right? Then what we are expecting be, please reduce the amount of time gaming. That's our school stand. Okay, now, of course, we'll tell the children who are not gaming, please do not start, alright? Please do not start gaming. Right? So let's move on. Sorry, it's a bit lagging. Every time I press enter, it doesn't go to the next slide needed. Okay, let me just. Okay, so this will be the overview of what I will probably be highlighting for the next one hour. Some introduction about gaming among the Singapore youth. Of course, our children are not youth yet, but yeah, they are going to be one very soon. A little bit on the game design for engagement and talking about game disorder versus excessive gaming. You'll notice that in the parent gateway letter, the topic for discussion is excessive gaming. Then why am I bringing gaming disorder? I'll highlight that later. And of course, I think most parents will be very interested in how do we then support our children with game dependency or gaming disorder. Okay, so let me just recapitulate some of the points that I mentioned last year. So last year in twenty twenty one, we do have a town hall session for cyber wellness. And we actually touch on the topic addiction of devices. So not so much about gaming. So these are some of the points that we highlighted. One of the, okay, let me just go through the points with you. We talk about ownership of the learning device. Parents, you have the, you are the owners of the devices. So you should have full rights over the devices, okay? So you will be the one that say yes or no to the use of the device. Then, of course, we talk about setting ground rules for usage, for example, amount of time that the child should be using the device. And where the child should be using the device and for what reason he or she should be using the device for. Then we talk about all of us activate parental controls on the learning devices. So of course, this will be very relevant. If you want to control your child's gaming, amount of time that they game. Okay, then you really, really have to activate this. Of course, for parents who are already enrolled in our one-to-one computing program. And you have actually opted in for our MDM, which is our mobile device management. Remember, in February, we actually have a workshop teaching parents how to control your child learning device. Yes, you can use that. But if you are not enrolled in that, alright, then not to worry, you can always control. Using, for example, if you're using an Apple device, that is what we call the screen time. So you can actually control your child's devices on the hardware itself. But if you're using Android or any other devices, there are a lot of apps, alright, that you can actually download. And you can even control your child's device remotely, meaning to say you are at work using your handphone. Your child is at home with the iPad or whatever learning device they have, you can actually set restriction. So is that, you are two spaces, but yet you can control. Then, of course, we strongly encourage parents to organize more indoor and outdoor activities, alright? So of course, when you have all these activities, you will take your child away from using the devices. Then, of course, please, as adults, we need to model good digital habits for our children. So for example, if you tell your children, please don't use a device, you know, when you're having a meal. Then make sure during meal times ourselves, we put our devices away, can. And of course, I also touch on navigating the internet together with our children to understand why they are using, alright? What, why they are using the device so often? So this is orange because we, I will highlight it later on in subsequent slides. So this, these are some of the things that we talked about last year, okay? Okay, um, yeah, let me, for the next two, probably two, three, three, four, four slides. It's some good articles that we have actually taken from straight time. Now, let me share with you some of these good articles. They are all reported in strict time. And the school really strongly encourage all parents to read them. Yeah, they really, really are very helpful, alright, when it comes to managing excessive gaming. And of course, the school really hope that parents will continue, alright, to follow up with any other articles that is published on straight time or any other platform to keep abreast with the latest development and trends in terms of cyber wellness. Okay, so here on my screen, right, you'll see that the debt gets a twenty thousand dollars bill now after the child gaming spree. So at the beginning of the year, this was a much talked about topic, right? Then, of course, then because of that, there will a lot of discussion about our children spending, okay? Then you notice on the extreme right-hand side, there were actually six tips, alright, for mindful gaming, which later on I will actually expand it in my slides for us to discuss it in details. So here, the article, you look at the title, it says, don't assume child has gaming disorder. So many of us feel that our children are playing games a little bit too much. So we say that is game addiction. That's the old term that we have been using. Now, what the experts are using is actually game dependency instead of game addiction. And because of game dependency, it may result in gaming disorder. I will show you the difference later on again, okay? So these are some articles. So that keeps an eye after the twenty thousand dollars lesson learned. Okay, so and of course, we recognize the fact that this game addiction or game dependency is on the rise among the young. Because now they actually get access to devices, yeah, so easily, am I right? Okay, so as mentioned, from one of the articles, there were six mindful tips for gaming. So I actually blew it up and then just take a look at it. It probably will help us in terms of managing excessive gaming of our children. So what are some of the things that we need to look at? It's actually the same thing, almost similar to what I discussed in twenty twenty one. So first thing is, we want to encourage the children to develop other hobbies. Just now remember, we say that organize indoor-outdoor activities. So here, we really want the children to develop hobbies. We want them to understand, you need to talk to the children and let them know, of course, the school is also sending the same message to the children. That, you know, time is so precious, is so precious, that please, we strongly encourage you to spend your precious time doing something other than just playing games. And what are these some things that you can do, alright, with your precious time? Example, pick up a hobby, playing sports, okay? Or you can actually do reading, or you can actually go outdoor, take a walk. So really, those are things that we really want the children to do, okay? Especially reading, right? Reading is actually a hobby to pick up. Now, of course, make time for family activities. When we make time for family activities, we not only create the opportunity for social interaction, bonding. And we also take them away from the device, okay? Now, of course, if, if some parents, we do allow our children to game, of course, they cannot have all the time, alright, to themselves to do the gaming, right, and do whatever they want with the device. So we do need to limit the time, alright? We need to limit the time that the child is using. I mean, the limited time that the child is using a device for gaming. And if you are giving them a specific amount of time for gaming or to do any other thing, then make sure we also structure their time, alright, structure the time and set routines for schoolwork and play. So we talk about balancing work and play, right? Then, of course, if they are gaming, then they must make sure they take breaks. Especially, we know that games comes with different levels. They must, they must take breaks between levels. Number one, I care. Number two is actually to orientate back, orientate them back to the physical world. Because when you're in the gaming world, it's like you're out of the real world. So we want them to take breaks so that they come back to the real world with us. And of course, what is very important for all of us to do is that we need to walk through the underlying issues with our children, okay? So all this will be touched on in the later slides. Okay, so very quickly, let's take a quick look. This is done by the experts, not by the school or myself. It's done by this organization, Sushum. So you look at, it's actually on the top left-hand corner. It's a non-profitable organization that actually identify that gaming is a rising problem, right? So they actually have experts to study and they do research about it. So based on their findings, right, these are some of the popular game titles in Singapore. Okay, now you notice that the primary school and the secondary school children, right? They are basically playing similar games. They are actually engaged in similar games. So the highlighted ones would be what appears in both the primary and the secondary school. I think many of you would be very familiar with some of these here. I'm not a game person, so I'm not so familiar with everything. So just, just, yeah, highlight here now. So since our children, so are engaged in all this, then what's so, what's so interesting about them? Why, why are they in these games, right? So just a quick, alright, just a quick sharing. When the children are playing games, right? Of course, the people who develop the game will have a good intent, right? They, they really, it's not about, I create a game and then make the children all get addicted to it. And then all the bad things come out of it and nothing good. Actually, there are good things that can come out from the games. So just for example, if we talk about Minecraft, which is a game that is pretty popular among the young. The skills that the children may acquire by playing this game is really creativity, planning and curiosity, right? These are some of the things that can actually come out from the game. And if we are talking about this other game, okay, uh, you'll see on the left-hand side, the game genre, right? The, the action role-playing game, you see, is it Jensen? I really don't know how to pronounce this game. My children have been correcting me in class also. I said, okay, Jensen Impact. So this is actually the game where the girl actually spent twenty thousand dollars from the daddy's credit card to buy the skin, yeah, for her game. So I highlighted it because this game is really not just all bad luck. The good thing that can come out from playing this, actually, if the children are playing it and then use, you know, really learning from the game, right? They are able to solve complex problems. Yeah, the complex problem-solving skills will actually be enhanced. The children will make good judgment and they will be learning decision-making and of course, organization skills. By right, these things should be acquired by the children now, okay? So what I'm trying to say is, I'm not, I'm not saying that games are just all good, alright, Noah, don't get me wrong. So really, what happened is that we all know that games are fun, they're entertaining. Because adults like us, we also do play some games, right, at times. So we all know that it will have, it will actually lead to higher brain activity, right? We get stimulated and then we will be very excitable, very active when they are playing games and all. Then, of course, in some games, we do teamwork and we don't play alone quietly. We have to talk with the community. Hey, hey, somebody is behind you. Hey, come on, on the right-hand side. So you communicate, you actually give instructions and all. So there are a lot of things that can actually, alright? The children can actually pick up from gaming. So these are just some of the few things that they can actually, alright, picked up from gaming. But again, too much of a good thing will then become a bad thing. So although we say that playing game, there are good things that can come out of it. No, no, when you do too much of it, then it can become a bad thing, okay? So this one, I, we recognize that. So of course, we, the good things, it comes with the possible problems from gaming. So these would be the common ones that we will look at. So ice cream, so we all know that Singapore has one of the highest rate of myopia, right? So of course, with gaming, honestly, even if they don't game, um, yeah, they will be looking at devices with the gland. Or ice cream is definitely going to be a problem. Of course, with gaming, it makes it worse. And of course, decreased sustained attention, alright, and of course, a cognitive control. So the children will probably, you know, be hindered in terms of their, their thinking skills. Then obviously, some of the children, they have no control. They have no control over the amount of time. They just keep on continuing because they want to progress to the next level. Then they actually will, okay, lose a lot of sleep. Okay, so the quality of the sleep, and we all know that there will be this golden hour of sleep, alright, for the children, right? So anxiety, why is there anxiety when they cannot clear a level to go to the next one? Then they get frustrated, then there's a lot of anxiety in them, then it's like, why, why is that? I cannot pass through this stage then? Yeah, then emotionally, they are affected. Then some, very interestingly, right, obesity, because they have been sitting down too much. No movement, they don't move around, no exercise. So obviously, this obesity thing can come together, but children don't see it. So we have to tell them, share with them, these are some of the problems that can happen, you know? Yeah, so I won't go through everything here, but of course, the other one that is very interesting and very important would be injuries. Some of the children, when they play too much of game, right, encounter risk issue, yeah, risk issue. And I think they have this, what they call the gamer time, because they have to do the clicking and all, right? Yeah, so notice that then it will lead to game dependency and then followed by game disorder, which I will tell you the slight difference between the two later on. And of course, one of the very big problem that straight time have been, you know, show, giving us articles and reports is on stealing. Some children, they resort to stealing to be able to buy whatever that they need in the game. So let's take a look. So this is some of the effect like stealing. A boy, eleven-year-old, actually stole four thousand dollars from his mother to buy mobile top-up cuts so that he can keep on, you know, feeding his game addiction. So this happens, stealing, alright? Then, of course, this is the twenty thousand dollars case. This one, the, because the cut was attached to the goal account, so therefore, it just, the money just got spent. Okay, so of course, this is not so much on stealing, can? Okay, though, so we talk about gaming disorder. So let me just share with you, the experts, a proposed clinical diagnosis, alright, is required. Alright, to actually say that someone is actually experiencing gaming disorder. So it needs to, somebody needs to, or the child needs to exhibit five or more of the following symptoms within one year, twelve months. So if they consistently exhibit five or more of these symptoms within twelve months, then they will be deemed to have gaming disorder, okay? So what are they? So maybe you can have a quick look. So they can just, they, they, all they think about is gaming and nothing else. Once they have the device, they go straight to the game, or they don't even bother with any other things, like maybe they don't, they don't even bother to wash your tooth. For you, for you, no, yeah, then withdraw symptoms. Some parents already experiencing this, right, for children, yeah, some parents were sharing with us that, wow, they, they just throw tantrums when I take away the device from them. So it is a sign of withdrawal. When they start to show that they're angry or they sink into depression or suicide, then they start crying non-stop, right? After you take things away. So this is a very common one. And of course, tolerance. The need to spend a lot, lot of time on gaming to satisfy urges, as if they're taking drugs, you know, like you can't, you know, not, not do it, you must do it kind. So of course, inability to reduce playing. So if, let's say, you observe that your child is gaming and you say, oh, can you stop gaming? Let's do this first, later you can come back to the game. And then they are willing to just, you know, close the, the device and then do the other thing with you. Then it shows that they have the ability to reduce playing. But if they say, no, 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 I don't want, everything is the one, I just want to do my game. I don't want to eat, I don't want to play, I don't want to go out, I don't want to do this. And that, then it's inability to reduce playing, okay? So of course, maybe our child enjoy doing something very much like cycling. Then suddenly you realize, hey, he has stopped cycling altogether, loss of interest in something that he used to like and love to do so much. Then it is also an indication, okay? So of course, deceiving family members as lying and all, all this will be symptoms now, okay? So negative modes and then of course, a negative consequence due, due to gaming is something else, but not so much at primary school level, okay? Right, so there's disorder. So, um, we identify, we recognize that excessive gaming will lead to quite a bit of problem, alright? If we do not intervene them early enough. So really, we are talking about early intervention, alright? We do not want them to be addicted before we do anything. But in order to be able to intervene and do something about it, right? Now we need to understand it better. So today, we really aim at understanding gaming a little bit more, okay? The experts are suggesting that excessive gaming, right, is most often a symptom of deeper unmet needs. Why are they just playing games non-stop? Is it just for the fun? Is it just because it's so entertaining? That we have to explore further. So when you, when you think that your child is the really playing game, playing too much game, then you need to dwell deeper to find out. Is it just for fun? Is it just for leisure, for the entertainment? Or is it because there's something else that is, yeah, that your child is looking for? Okay, so if we look at Maslow motivational model, right? We are saying that excessive gaming is often a symptom of unmet deficiency needs. So we must first understand the need. So if you look at the, the triangle, right, right at the bottom, you look at it, is the broadest of all. That is the need, alright, the basic, the fundamental. Then as it moves up, right, it gets smaller, alright? So we are saying that the deficiency need is, is really at the base, like all your esteem needs, belonging and love, safety and sociological needs. So some children, they may be lacking of these and they are looking for these in, in the games that they are engaged in, okay? Then let's take a look. Um, there actually, many of us, we are not aware. We, we just group the gamers all together, they're all playing games, so they're all gamers. Actually, there are four types of gamers out there. And then we need to know which is our kid, which one did my child fall under, which category is my child in? So it will be good for us to know, in order to know what replacement strategy that we should actually adopt to help them move away from the game that they are playing. So each type of player here, right, they actually have their individual needs that are being met in the gaming world. They may not get this in the real world and therefore, they go into the game world to look for this. So how can these needs be satisfied in the real world, in the school context, for example? So for us teachers, we are looking into the school context, what can I do in a classroom to take the child away from games? And as parents, then you will need to ask yourself, how can these needs be satisfied in the real world in the home context? Yeah, okay? So let's take a very quick look at the, the four different types of gamers. So the first one is what we call the achievers. So what are some of the behavior that they exhibit? They really run after score. So if you keep hearing your child talking about, oh, I got high score, I, I broke my, my score this, I went to the next level. Very highly likely, it could be, your child could be an achiever, alright? Enjoys competing with others and frequently compare, brag or show off what they can do in the game, alright? And take note that if they are achievers, they are more emotionally affected by the games, okay? So take note of that. And what are some of the inward motivations, achievements? What is it that they want? They are looking for achievements. They want to feel that they have achieved something. They want to be recognized. They want affirmation from somebody, alright? So they need to have success and they want to avoid, okay, losing. So this is some of the characteristics here. So the second type of gamer, we call them the brutes, alright? So what is it? Really, they don't, they, they are not really bothered with whether I can go to the next level or whether I have the highest score in the game, but they really value mastering a game. So these people, they are concerned with process, alright? So you need to know that, oh, if my child is a brute, that means my child enjoys the process of doing something. Is it that I can engage my child that actually requires them to pay attention to the process? And not just the outcome, because outcome is really not the most important, right? So they are very technical and they communicate very little. So you notice that they say very little things and then, yeah, mainly very quiet. So look at your child, observe, if your child is playing game, nothing much came out. Some children are very expressive when they're playing game, they see a lot of things, they make a lot of noise, probably not the brutes then, okay? So this group of players, they will solve issues at hand by using available resources most efficiently. And they get, they gain a lot of satisfaction in mastering the issue at hand, not solving, but they, they actually like to try new things, they like to do things differently, okay? So the third type is actually the explorer. Um, they don't need to master every aspect of the game. They don't need a high score. But they want to know what are all the different features in the game. They just want to know, oh, it has this, 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 this. They want to explore. So these players, they are very curious. So if you know that your child is very curious, they like to explore things, then what is it that we can offer them in the real world? We need to offer them platforms, opportunities for exploration, right? What, what can be done, what should be done and how it can be done? So go and find out things. Then these people, they really like experiences, okay? And they are captivated by the different experiences that they can get in the real world, okay? Or in the game world, sorry. Now, the last one is socializer. These people, you notice that some, some parents shared with us that the children actually have very few friends. They don't talk much. So they find that they are very quiet and very lonely. So what do they look out for? They go to the game world because they are behind the screen, nobody see them. So they, they open up and they start talking a lot, yeah, in the game world. Because they really need to have friends. In the real world, they have very few friends, they feel lonely. So they are looking for the sense of belonging in the game world. So is my child a socializer? If that's the case, then I need to offer, I need to create opportunity for my child to make friends, alright? To have more interactions, social interactions with other people. So what are some of the activities that I can have at home that will take my child away? And then, you know, giving him the opportunity to make friends and all, alright, to socialize. So there are mainly four groups of people here, four groups of gamer here, alright? So I think by knowing a little bit about the different groups, right? Then we will know what are some of the replacement strategy that we can adopt. Because we cannot blindly say, okay, keep your device away, put it away, no gaming, stop that, everything. But then if we stop the child, let's say, my child is a socializer and I just take it away, oh dear. There's no, no avenue for the child to ventilate, nobody for him to talk to. Then will the child sink into depression? That's also one thing that I mean, as a dad, I'm, I'm worried for as well, right? So really, how do we then help the child in terms of game dependency, safe space, alright? So for them to share, it will be good, I mean, like what I say, if you restrict, if you set some routines at home, say that, okay, I will allow you to play games, but you can only play games when mommy is at home. So the timing is probably after dinner. I want you to eat well. So let's do this after dinner. So maybe it's seven thirty, so maybe let's do this, let's agree, eight, seven thirty to eight thirty, it's our game time, okay? You can play the game. Mommy would like to learn from you, what are some of the games that you are playing and why are you playing it? So talk to your child, find out. And also, when they are playing, you observe the behavior that they exhibit. Then you will be able to know exactly what can you do and what should you be doing, alright? That will actually effectively help you pull your child away from the game world, right? So observation is important, talking to them is important. And of course, in order to observe, in order to talk, you need to set, alright, routines, like what I mentioned in my earlier slides, okay? So agree on the time and all. And then, of course, knowing a little bit more about the four groups of player, then try to see if possible, what are some of the traits that your child exhibited? That will help us in terms of the replacement strategy. Because here, what we are saying is that if you want to take the child away from the game world, right? Then the child will be like, oh dear, what am I going to do now? I can't play a game, now sit there blindly and not know what to do at all, right? So we are saying that we want to replace, alright, the time, alright, that the child is using for game to do other things, okay? So we are talking about replacement strategies here, okay? Understand the motivation, why they are doing it, then we replace with what is appropriate, yeah? So as mentioned earlier on, we talked about gaming disorder and game dependency, right? Very quickly, this would be the difference now, okay? So we are saying that nowadays, we are using game dependency instead of game addiction. So children depend a lot of the games, they really play a lot of games. And when it becomes, remember, when they exhibit five or more within twelve months, then it will then become gaming disorder. So if you look at it, right, when the child is having gaming disorder, there's no control at all already. Basically, little, I think, is really no controller. If the child is only having game dependency, then the child is still able to exercise some self. Uh, if the child is only having, uh, game dependency, then the child is still able to exercise some self-control. Even if it's not self-control, if the parents or the adult stepped in, right, the child will be able to follow instructions, that is dependency. But if I give instruction, put it away, stop gaming, and the child just ignore you and continue, that is an disorder, okay? Then, of course, uh, meeting the clinical diagnosis, like what I mentioned about the, the traits that was shared earlier on, right? So, of course, for gaming disorder, it has to be five or more within a period of twelve months. So you really need to make observation over a period of time, okay? Then, uh, of course, for dependency, they may just exhibit some of the symptoms, but, uh, may not be all five, maybe just one or two of them. And, um, and not over, uh, uh, the, the, the whole twelve months, yeah. Then, of course, uh, gaming results with the impact neurology, uh, the brain work here, uh, memories affect the. Yeah, so all those things, so this is just a slight, okay, uh, come, uh, uh, difference in the two. Okay, so this is something here, now I think parents, uh, will be this. So player types and engagement, so we talk about replacement engagement, right, uh, replacement strategy, so we talk about player type. And the characteristics, so achievers, they are competitive, they are seekers, right? So then how, in the real world, in the real world, we need to help them feel that they are set up for success. Then we need to know what are the things that we should engage them, that they can see success, alright? Um, then we will try to do more of that. Then also, they need affirmation, right? They, they like to brag, they like to boast. Then because they want people to praise that, oh, yeah, 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 why your score is so high, so they need, you know, affirmation. So as adults, we need to give them platforms to affirm them, things that they have done well in the real world, not just in the game world. So there are things that they can do in the real world. And of course, uh, for this group of people, we, we must, we must as adults, break down the responsibilities and the task. For them to manage, alright, so that they can, you know, take little, uh, bite size. So these group of people need to do things in bite size, don't just throw the task to the child and say, okay, and do this. So I guess, uh, you will give them assessment where it's, okay, complete chapter nine, um, to the achiever, it may be a little daunting, uh. So probably the whole chapter to be broken down into manageable bite sizes. So this is what we mean by knowing them and then, uh, having, you know, uh, it, it will have imp- uh, implications on our implementations, our actions. Okay, so of course guru, we talk about the mastery of game, uh, they really. They like the process, right? So guru like open-ended questions and open-ended challenges, meaning things that really offer them different possibilities. No need to have just one fixed answer. Yeah, so that could be something that the guru really enjoy doing. So in the real world, what is it? That, hmm, I can offer my child something that is open-ended and then more than one way of doing it. Yeah, and also, uh, as parents, we will give you the resources, we give you the materials, we offer you the opportunities. But you come up with the solutions and not just give the child the solutions straight away, okay? And of course, give them the, the, empower them, alright, uh, the, 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 the. The rights to test and, and to try various possibilities. So, uh, sometimes adults, because, uh, we know, uh, we're concerned with safety, I say, no, 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 you don't do this, uh. This is very dangerous for you, so we sometimes set quite a bit of restrictions for our children, right? So, uh, we really need to come with an open mind, alright, sometimes, um, but of course, if anything to compromise safety, uh, adult supervision must be, must be there. Okay, so of course the explorer, uh, they have to see everything and they have to touch everything, so they are the very hands-on people. So they really like to touch things, so if you by telling them, it's not gonna work then, alright, so, um. Providing trivia facts, uh, background stories about challenges, okay, will be very helpful for these people. So trivial things would be very important for this group of people, then novelty fun. And, uh, notice explorer like to do things repeatedly, they do it, alright, again and again and again and again. Alright, so they are the ones that like it, but it may be boring for, uh, the achievers and the gurus then, okay? So non-static challenge and all, again, uh, they need to move around these other people that really need to move, so. Do not expect your child to be sitting by the desk and then doing that, that task that you have assigned, right? And of course, socializer, uh, they need group settings, they are probably not gonna be very effective. If they are gonna do things all by themselves, because they are so lost all by themselves, they really need the support of other people. So of course, at home, sitting together as a family, uh, maybe, uh, if you do have, um, neighbors and all. Create opportunity for, for these children to come together now that the S M M have, um, yeah, allow the bigger group size, right? So I mean, these are things that we can explore, and of course, a socializer. Um, they like to talk to people, so you notice that they, they need to be given opportunity to, to, to talk. So you need to listen to them, uh, lend them a listening ears, okay? And this group of people are more relational, so relationship is very important for this group of people. So you need to first build relationship with socializer first, before they can actually, you know. Do whatever that you actually ask them to do, so the relationship here is very, very important, um, and not so much about task oriented, okay? Can, so this would be the engagement, um, the four types of engagement here that we are talking about. Um, okay, before I go to the, the other slides, because you noticed that in some slides you will see this logo. Uh, I need to give special thanks to, uh, Susus, they will be this organization that really, really work on gaming, uh. And this comeback is actually a project they engage in, so some of the slides, um, materials are shared by Susus, okay? Right, so, uh, just a very quick, alright, advertisement here, um, Susus organized parents webinar. Every year, so this year, there will be this free webinar. So for parents who really, really want to know more about games, gamers and game dependency. They are offering this webinar on the twenty fifth of May, it's on a Saturday, ten thirty A M to one thirty P M. It is a Zoom, just like a Zoom webinar, just like what you are doing now, um, and it is free of charge. So if you would like to register, uh, I have the link by the side, you can just, yeah, go to this, uh, this site. And you'll be able to register yourself for this webinar, it's free of charge, okay? So it's just, uh, to let you know that this is, um, yeah, up and coming, uh, so, uh, May, probably next month, okay? Let's, okay, so before I go to, oh, sorry, I mean, this, uh, alright, I think I missed out two slides, okay? Uh, okay, I stopped share first before I address that, it's the end of my sharing for today. Um, okay, let me see this, okay, is there any Q and A or is there any? Uh, sorry, there's one Q and A here, let me see, it's very far away from me. Uh, sorry, my Q and A is missing, okay, let me see, yeah. Okay, who has categorized game addiction as mental illness or W H O? Um, does school has any plans to guide students on how it should be avoided? Oh yes, definitely, of course, in school, we have cyber wellness program, so, uh, we are following up with the latest, uh, development, now. So that's why we have been following, uh, straight time and, and of course, other places. Uh, to see what is actually happening in the real world at the moment and what is the current trend. And, uh, at the beginning of the year, we realized that children, a lot of, uh, uh, people talking about gaming. That's why at the beginning of the year, we, we, we have customized, uh, lessons and we have shared with the children about gaming. To make sure that, uh, they do not land themselves into game addiction. So yes, we do have programs in school, uh, we do guide them, we do tell them what are the do's and don'ts, alright? What are the can and cannot, and of course, um, yeah, and it will not be just a once-off, uh, program. It will definitely be a continuous, uh, journey. So for example, we talked about gaming in our pre-exam, uh, pre- flat raising, alright, we do have, uh, ten minutes, uh, airtime with the children. Then we did survey to find out, uh, what are the games the children are playing, how, uh, are they spending money on it? Uh, we actually do have names with us and the teachers actually will go to the children. Because, uh, some of these children, they were honest, uh, children, they will actually tell us that, oh, I played this game, spent this much, uh, this much on the game. How long I played, so we actually know who we should be working with. So we actually, uh, work with the form teachers, uh, or the subject teachers, uh, to actually monitor these children closely. Hmm, so that they do not end up with game addiction or what we call, uh, game disorder. Yeah, so, uh, any other question? I think I see one Q and A, okay, maybe, um. I highlight, uh, some of the concerns that parent, I think some of the concerns that parents have when they register for this webinar, right? They actually indicated some of the, the thing. A, a parent claimed that they wanted to, they wanted the school to have a timer. For the online work that we actually assign to, uh, children, unfortunately, we are not able to assign timer. Yeah, because when we send out the work, right, um, the system doesn't, uh, yeah, fix a timing. Because the parent is saying that, okay, once the child opened up this piece of work, right, uh, given, uh, two hours. Then at the end of two hours, straight away, the child will be, um, kicked up from the online platform, so no more shutdown. Um, yeah, this is not possible at the moment, but well, what we can, uh, suggest to parents is that. Uh, well, if you think that, uh, you want the school to set a two-hours time, then why not to do a restriction on the screen time? You can set a screen time of two hours for your child, uh, you can actually just, you know, if you do, uh, some. Uh, mobile management, like what I mentioned earlier on, you can actually set the time to release, that means, uh, maybe, um. Seven thirty in the evening, your child will be able to assess YouTube example. And then you will set the limit and say, okay, at eight thirty, YouTube will be gone, so when the child use a device and look at a device, right? There's no way that your child can assess YouTube on the device, because you have set the restriction. So I suggest that parents set, uh, restriction on the device, okay? We set it on the hardware itself directly or using an app, okay, can, um. Then, of course, uh, I do have parents, thank you very much for your response, because when you are registering, or you also, uh, tell us that, oh, my child have got very good self-control. Uh, I think it will, is it Lucas? I, I think I remember the name was Lucas, very good boy. Uh, mommy says that, oh, my child only spends forty-five minutes a day on game, and it is just forty-five minutes every day. So my child exercises a lot of self-control, so I guess parents would have put in, um, systems. Put in the established routine, have set structures so well that, you know, from young, the child already have been practicing it, so it is habit. So then the child, uh, is able to control and stay within the forty-five minutes, uh, that, that's very, um, happening, like, to, to see. Yeah, uh, from the parent's feedback. Um, another one, another parent actually, uh, talk about code for fun. Yeah, first of all, uh, thank you for the affirmation that the code for fun program is good, because this mommy says that, wow, my boy is so, um. Uh, into code for fun, and he says that after he learns how to code, he wants to do an app for Roblox. Because the child wants to play Roblox, right, so he don't just want to be a gamer, he wants to write the app for Roblox. So he wants to create, it's about mastery, right? So this child is actually a guru, your child is a guru, not an achiever. Because he wants to create it, alright, not just to get high score, so then, um, but of course. Uh, she can't do it now, because they are concerned because P six, right? And your suggestion is to do it at the end of P six, that means after P S L E. So maybe let me share with you the, the rationale behind why we are doing it at the beginning of the year. Um, to do coding, right, it's really about computational thinking, the children need to have logic, right? Then they have decision-making, they need sequencing, because to do coding, you really need to have the sequence, right? So all these skills, we are saying that if the child acquired these skills through coding. We would like them to transfer this learning into their daily learning. So it should actually help them in the learning of the different subjects in the real world, in the classrooms. That is the reason why we actually put it at the beginning of the year, yeah. So, um, just in case you are wondering, why is it that the school don't put it as opposed, uh, P S L E as, uh, activity? Yeah, I do know that some schools do it that way, but really, we come from the angle that we really want them to acquire the thinking skills. And then apply it in their learning and hopefully helps them to be a better learner, so that was the code for fun. Yeah, so that was one of the, uh, concern that the parents actually enter when you register for webinar, hmm. So, sorry, there's another one, let me just click online. Ah, what's the you, what's usually the estimated time, what will be required for schoolwork in I F A? Okay, this depends, uh, I can't give you, okay, if you look at our handbook, right, we do have the, uh, handbook has got guidelines. For homework, yes, so please do take a look, uh, we do give a guidelines of how many hours of homework should the child be given. Alright, and of course, from there, then we will break it up to whether is it online work or offline work, yeah. Um, okay, all the teachers, we are very, we are aware that the children must not be looking at the screen the whole time. So, um, when we give what we will, we will look into, uh, the well-being of the child. So if let's say you are not aware and you are not so sure how much time, or for example, to say that, oh, my child has S L S, uh, work. But I really do not know how long my child should be sitting there doing that piece of work, then maybe what I would suggest is. Uh, maybe you can actually communicate with the teacher and say that, is it possible when you set the, uh, the homework? Also, um, let my child know that what is expected time that the child should be using. Just like, for example, L W T, right, some parents said, wow, the children take weeks to do the L W T task, but. Well, we recommend the, the task to be done within thirty minutes, but the child really, you know, worked on it for, for a long time. Then maybe that is not what we really want, so, um, work with the teacher on your preferred platform, as in. Because different piece of work require different amount of time, so I really cannot tell you how much, like myself, uh, whenever I assign a work, right? I will indicate amount of time that the child should be doing, whether it's offline or online for that piece of work, I do state that. So maybe you can actually establish some, uh, of this requirement, or maybe communicate and say that, uh, it would be good for you to know, yeah. And of course, some children, they happily go home, uh, and tell their parents that, oh, I have got online work to do, I need to do S L S. I need to go into seesaw, I need to go Google Classroom, but you notice that they are spending so many hours on it. Uh, really, we will not, we will not give them many hours of online work. Then you, if you suspect something is, something fishy is going on, uh, then maybe you wanna observe a little bit more. Uh, walk past your child, go behind, walk and then, and see what is on the screen and then walk past again. So, yeah, as a parent, we need to be very observant, right, and really see what's on the screen, that's why you need to set. Um, you need to actually set the rules, the ground rules of where the child should use the device, preferably somewhere that is public. In the house where people will walk, then they will be a bit more conscious now what they will do. And as parents, we also know what my child is doing, yeah, then from there, you will know whether the child is telling you the truth. How can we expect the kids to transfer and apply the computing skill from coding class into their studies? Isn't it better to spend time to prepare for D S A? Um, of course, um, okay, from the perspective of, of, um, okay, like maybe for myself, like as an individual, everything is important, you know? Uh, I cannot guarantee that after I teach you the skill, you acquire it, even if you acquire it, you will apply it. I, I cannot guarantee, right, then you will say that, oh, if that's the case, then don't apply the skill, then just spend. Then if you prepare for D S A, you actually just spend all your time on D S A. And, and again, we cannot guarantee that the outcome for D S A is going to be what we want, right, what we expected, what if? Yeah, um, how would I put it? I must be very. Yeah, if you are not successful in your D S A, then how? You spend all your time doing D S A and you're not successful? Then is it the whole time is all wasted? So really, we are, we are saying that, don't put all your eggs in one basket, lah. How, everything has its importance, so the whole idea is really to balance. And these computing skills, um, you, you will not say that, oh, you know, you learn code for fun, you learn computing skills, now. See how we're doing math, uh, you are doing computing skills, uh, in mathematics, no, 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 we are not, we are not going to do that, because all this will not work with the kids. What we are saying is that when they are learning the computing skills, right, for example, they learn sequencing, so they will, they will. Uh, the cognitive, uh, we are talking about cognitive, so they will know how to sequence things, okay, I'll do this first, then the next thing, so they know. That they have to do things step by step, so they are very organized. Don't we need to be very organized when we do our math, uh, word problem solutions? We need to really do it step by step, from top to bottom, line by line, and we don't want to jump anywhere and anyhow, right? So when you see your child doing mathematics or any other work, that in what he's presenting his work, it could be. A sign that your child is applying the computing skills, yeah, so, uh, that's where we are coming from, that, right? Okay, so, uh, we are not saying that, well, of course, um, we, we can't stop you from stopping your child do. All other things, but just to prepare for D S A, uh, D S A is good, is good, yes, definitely good, but, um, just be mindful that you spend all your time on it. The outcome may not be what you want, you may not be successful, I've got two boys, alright, uh, both apply for D S A, my elder one got it, my second one didn't get it. Yeah, I wanna be very honest here, okay? Can we have coding class after they finish their D S A? Unfortunately, is, is, is beyond me, I'm so sorry, because this is a national initiative. Um, uh, it, uh, is a national initiative, you know, uh, all schools, uh, upper primary of primary school. And, uh, lower secondary school do code for fun, uh, we are given the option, there are only two options for me. You either do it at the beginning of the year or you do it at the end of the year, uh, so we compare the two and then we weigh, um. Uh, so our decision, like what I mentioned earlier on, we feel that doing at the beginning of the year, when the regal, you know, they have not really go into full swing that. Into the preparation of their, their D S A and. Into the preparation of the the D S A and the P S L E, so and it's gonna be helpful for their learning. Why not we do it come on, because uh most structured classes, we have not, will not start in come on, right? So come on is the time where I can actually pick up other skills, so that is the reason why we do it at the beginning of the year, yeah. Okay, any other questions? Uh so I I noticed that a lot of parents are like uh very interested in the code for fun, so I guess a lot of P six parents here. Oh definitely, so if let's say after P S L E, because it's definitely a very important skills. And I think recently a colleague just shared with me that, I think the N U S Math and Ha- uh Math and Science High School, they are making computing. Um science, a compulsory subject, huh, in set one, right, if I remember correctly, so um yeah. Uh coding is not just a going to be a once-off, your child is definitely gonna do it, um even after the code for fun, it could be any other time. Okay, sure, so we won't be talking about other things, because uh let's come back, today's focus is actually managing games, right? So I think that's all for this afternoon, thank you for your time, because I didn't see any questions as related to gaming. So uh thank you, parents, for your time today, thank you so much. Yeah, bye, we're gonna end the webinar now.